Done. All right, everybody, it is, uh, seven fifty. It is October twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty. This is our second scheduled Borough Council meeting of the month of October. Uh, we are called to order, folks. If you could please join me in pledging the flag, we'll stay seated. Um, I pledge allegiance to the flag. Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Thank you, everyone. Uh, Angela, roll call, please.
Corey Scott.
Here.
James Fee.
Here.
Randy Bennett.
Here.
Megan Holland. Here. Diane Gundrum.
Here.
Tony Hile.
Here.
Kyle Shank.
Here. Thank you, Angela. That's everybody accounted for. And, uh, folks, just for the public record, we were in executive session from seven o'clock until about seven forty-five. Uh, discussing some personnel matters and some other potential matters of, uh, liability. Mr. Truman.
All right, thank you. First up for council consideration, adoption of council meeting minutes for the October thirteenth, two thousand and twenty meeting.
I'll make the motion.
A second.
For a motion made by Mr. Scott, seconded by Ms. Nolan to adopt the meeting minutes from October thirteenth. Any, uh, questions or comments from council on that? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, that passes unanimously. Thank you.
Good. Thank you all. Next, for council consideration, a resolution two thousand and twenty dash twenty-three. Approving a one-year extension of the collective bargaining agreement between the Teamsters Local Three Eighty-four and the Borough of Bridgeport. Covering calendar year two thousand and twenty-one. Members of council, uh, in your packets, you will, uh, you will see this resolution as well as the, uh, CBA extension document. As, uh, as all of you know, the, uh, the current collective bargaining agreement between the Borough and the Teamsters Local Three Eighty-four, uh, which represents our public works, sewer plant and police dispatch personnel uh, is set to expire as of December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty, this year. The economic uncertainty resulting from the COVID-nineteen economic shutdown has left both sides, uh, both labor and administration, um, with, um, with some questions as to, uh, as to what potentially is the, uh, is the right way to move forward in terms of, uh, in terms of negotiating a new agreement, which typically has a, uh, a four-year contract term. So, um, in the effort to protect both parties, both sides' interest, we have come to a, uh, we, meaning administration and the Teamsters, uh, leadership have come to a compromise. This resolution and the, uh, the corresponding paperwork would call for a one-year extension of the current terms of the collective bargaining agreement that, uh, the Teamsters have enjoyed for calendar year two thousand and twenty, um, and would stretch us over to, uh, uh, to stretch those terms over to, uh, a new, uh, contract termination date of December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one. So, in other words, uh, just a one-year extension, the, all of the terms of twenty-one, uh, agreement would mirror the exact same, uh, same term experienced in two thousand and twenty.
Sounds like a, a win-win and a good work by all involved to compromise and, and move forward under the circumstances, and I'll make the motion.
A second.
Motion by Mr. Bennett, seconded by Ms. Gundrum to approve the one-year extension to the collective bargaining agreement with the Teamsters Local Three Eighty-four and the Borough covering next year. Any additional questions from Bridgeport or any additional questions from council? Hearing none, then all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Truman.
Thank you all. Next, for council consideration, resolution two thousand and twenty dash twenty-four. Authorizing the renewal of the employment agreement between the Borough of Bridgeport and Police Chief Todd Beretta.
And this is a two-year extension, Mr. Truman.
Thank you, Mr. Shank. Yes, members of council in your packets, you will see a, uh, the, the, the resolution that would, uh, that would authorize this extension, as well as the corresponding, uh, contract document. Uh, this would be, uh, again, uh, I hate to sound repetitive, but, uh, effectively, uh, very, uh, very similar terms to what, uh, what we're already, uh, working with. And, um, this time a two-year extension rather than a one-year extension.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Hile, seconded by Mr. Fee to, uh, extend Chief Beretta's contract for two years under the terms as described. Uh, do we have any additional questions or comments from council?
Um, I'll just make the comment that I'm, I'm really pleased that we can continue to work together with the chief who's established a great rapport with our community. Um, in addition to the good work of our police department, um, with this and the previous issue with the other collective bargaining agreement, um, I just want to show my appreciation as one of these board members here, um, to everyone for understanding our situation budget-wise and rededicating themselves to the borough. The, the, the decisions made by the chief and by everyone involved here, um, are in the borough's interest, and I think that that shows a lot of character by all involved, and I'm just, I'm very grateful for that.
Thanks, Tony. Any other, uh, questions or comments from council on that? Hearing none, I'll just echo what Tony said. Chief, I do appreciate the work you've been doing and, uh, I'm glad you're amenable to staying. So, uh, folks, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, then that passes unanimously. Thanks.
Excuse me. Thank you all. And, uh, congratulations, uh, Chief Beretta. Next, for council consideration, authorization to pay bills and salaries, uh, for the month of October two thousand and twenty.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
I heard a motion from Ms. Nolan. Was that, uh, Mr. Fee that seconded?
Mr. Scott.
Mr. Scott seconded. Motion made by Ms. Nolan, seconded by Mr. Scott. Any additional questions or comments on the, uh, payment of the bills and salaries for the month? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes unanimously. Thank you.
Very good. Uh, and next up, uh, a presentation, introduction to the two thousand and twenty-one budget. Uh, tonight, we will be covering the twenty-twenty year-end projections for revenues and expenditures. Uh, for this, I am going to, uh, share my screen and, uh, and bring up a PowerPoint presentation. So please bear with me all. All right. Does everybody have the, uh, the, the cover page of the PowerPoint visible?
Yeah, yes.
Very good. Okay, uh, without any further ado, as, uh, as is customary, um, for, uh, as a refresher to council as well as, uh, our viewing audience, uh, we, uh, we typically start the, uh, the budget process by looking at how we are projecting to finish out, uh, the, uh, the calendar year of, uh, which we're in, uh, two thousand and twenty in this case. So, uh, in terms of general fund revenues, uh, the twenty-twenty budget, uh, called for an expectation of five million one hundred seventy-five thousand and one hundred fifty-seven dollars in, uh, in overall, uh, general fund revenues. And, uh, general fund, for those unfamiliar with the, uh, with the term, are typically, um, government, uh, catch-all funds, i.e., funds that are not, uh, that do not have a specific, uh, intent or, or enterprise purpose. Uh, in the case of Bridgeport, we have, aside from the general fund, uh, we have the capital fund, which covers our capital improvement projects, our large-scale projects. We have the liquid fuels fund, which covers the state, uh, PennDOT-issued aid that every municipality receives, uh, annually uh, and must be spent and appropriated on a very finite and specific, uh, number of projects or uses. We have our enterprise fund, which is our sewer fund, which is the operating, uh, budget for our wastewater treatment facility and system. Uh, and we have our other varying, uh, police and non-uniform pension funds. So the general fund is effectively the operating, uh, budget for, uh, the, uh, the, the entire borough that is not, uh, the sewer plant. Uh, that is administration, building and codes, police and public works, as well as, uh, the support that we give the fire annually. So, uh, twenty-twenty budget calls for five point one seven five million dollars. Uh, the actual figure as of the end of September, which is, uh, the, the most current figures that we have, we have accumulated four point three seven eight million dollars in revenue this year. Uh, therefore, um, that projects out to a twenty-twenty year-end projection of five point three one four million and change. If everything holds true, that would mean that we would end up being a hundred and thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred dollars over budget, which is a good thing. Uh, one of the few times where being over budget is a positive. As for expenditures, again, uh, because we are mandated, uh, by state and local ordinances that we must present a balanced general fund budget annually, uh, the, uh, the expenditures match the revenues, five point one seven five million for the twenty-twenty budget. As of September thirtieth, we have spent three point eight two three million dollars and change in the general fund. This projects out to a year-end figure of four point eight zero two million dollars, which in this case would be three hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars under budget compared to what we thought we would spend, uh, for calendar year two thousand and twenty. What does this mean? Uh, well, this means that the, uh, the fund balance or net surplus at the end of the year is currently projecting, and then all you do is you subtract revenues from or expenditures from revenues, uh, we're looking at a projected fund balance, if everything holds firm, of about five hundred and twelve thousand dollars. This fund balance or net surplus equals nine point six percent of our projected twenty-twenty revenues. Uh, generally accepted fund balance percentages typically range between five and ten percent. Therefore, according to the projected year-end figures, we should fall within said range. And, you know, to that point, uh, members of council or audience members who are watching, you might be, uh, you might be scratching your head and saying, "Well, you know, we were just talking about, uh, economic uncertainty and revenue shortfalls, um, as a result of COVID-nineteen, five hundred and twelve thousand dollars seems like a really nice, uh, surplus to be able to put into the coffers and carry forward into, uh, into the next calendar year." It's a, a yes-but scenario, and here's why. Well, we'll, we'll get to that. Actually, yeah, we'll get to that page in a moment, but, uh, just a quick note. End-of-year surplus and deficit projections are certainly not ironclad and not always accurate. Uh, mitigating circumstances such as emergency expenditures can always have an impact on the bottom line. However, looking back at two thousand and nineteen's projections, uh, at the October twenty-second, two thousand and nineteen meeting, uh, I and the administration projected a general fund budget surplus of about three hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. Once the audit was completed, it was determined that our general fund budget was actually about two hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars, a margin of error of, of only thirty-nine thousand. And if we go back and we look at two thousand and eighteen, uh, the projected, the, at this same October meeting, uh, the projected general fund budget surplus and what we ended up reaping, uh, after the audit was complete, only had a margin of error of sixteen thousand. So while this isn't an ironclad and accurate number, we generally fall within a, um, a, a relatively close range in terms of projecting what we should, uh, what we should end the year with. Now, to that initial point of what I, uh, what I just mentioned, um, you know, five hundred thousand dollars seems, uh, very nice, especially when you're looking at, we only finished with about three hundred thousand, uh, this time, uh, this time last year. Another note, twenty-twenty year-end revenue projection of five point three one four million dollars includes, that revenue includes an inter-fund transfer of three hundred thousand dollars that came from the sewer fund earlier this year and was voted upon at a public meeting earlier this year, as all large-scale inter-fund transfers are. This inter-fund transfer typically occurs every year, and it's intended to assist in the ongoing effort to pay off the debt that the sewer fund accumulated over the years as a result of its operating expenses being subsidized by the general fund. In normal years, uh, this transfer, whether it's, um, and the, and the dollar figure, the two, the three hundred thousand dollars in, in, in this case, some years it's only been two hundred thousand, some years it's been four hundred, sometimes it's been a hundred and eighty. It all is predicated upon what our year-end sewer fund surplus or deficit, um, may be. So in norm, but in normal years, this transfer gets transferred again, uh, from the general fund to the capital fund in order to replenish our ability to fund capital improvements. Uh, in other words, this year, we're missing a step. The, the three hundred thousand dollars that goes from the sewer fund to the general fund normally then gets placed in the capital fund in, in an effort to annually replenish the cap fund. However, we made the decision earlier this year, eh, to retain those sewer fund transfer monies in the general fund as a way to combat the revenue shortfalls experienced due to the COVID-nineteen shutdown. In short, the general fund's year-end projected surplus is artificially inflated by three hundred thousand dollars. When you take that three hundred thousand out, we're looking at a projected year-end revenue of five point zero one four million, not five point three one four. And when you deduct expenditures from that, you have a much smaller projected fund balance of two hundred and twelve thousand for the year, which equals four point two percent of projected revenues, which would be the, or, excuse me, which would be below the generally accepted standard. Uh, one important note, twenty-twenty projected revenue of five point zero one four million would represent a decrease in revenue of about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, one seventy-nine, eight, twelve, compared to twenty-nineteen's final revenue figure of five point one nine four million, or a three point four percent drop. And frankly, from what I, what I'm looking at and, uh, the, the stats that I'm getting from other adjacent Montgomery County municipalities, a lot of them are experiencing a, uh, a, a drop in revenue of about three to four percent. Uh, sometimes higher, sometimes lower, but three to four percent seems to be the mean, um, mean, uh, me, mean figure. Clearly, a rega, a regression of revenues between years is an indicator that certain exigent circumstances were a factor in creating this shortfall. In Bridgeport's case, the regression in revenue is a result of several key revenue accounts tracking well behind where they were anticipated due to the economic impact of COVID-nineteen. Namely, uh, real estate tax, earned income tax, local services tax, and residential trash fees are all projecting currently to come in below budgeted expectations. So, uh, with that, I'll open the floor to any questions, uh, if, if there are any other specifics or details that members of council might, uh, like me to share or present tonight. Um, otherwise, the next step in our budgetary process, uh, will be the November tenth meeting, where I will, uh, unveil, uh, version one of the two thousand and twenty-one general fund budget, the first draft of the twenty-one general fund budget, as well as capital purchase requests for calendar year two thousand and twenty-one. Are there any questions?
Keith, uh, going into next year, um, you know, I, I, three and a half percent revenue shortfall is actually better than I thought we would be, given all the COVID issues. Going the next year, are we expecting that to be tougher because, uh, the twenty-twenty EIT is where we're gonna see real issues?
It's a, uh, it's a distinct possibility. We, in, in, in projecting finances and, and, and developing the budget this year, um, has not been as insular a, uh, a process as it normally is, meaning, you know, each township and each borough, uh, going off of their own historical trends and, uh, and developing a budget based on that. There's been a lot more, uh, communication and interaction between, uh, other Montgomery County boroughs and townships, sharing figures, sharing what they've been experiencing this year, and sharing their insight and, and their, uh, their projections as to, uh, as to how the economy is going to rebound. And nobody can say with certainty what is going to happen, uh, next year. I think everybody is bracing for a, uh, a continued reduction in some of those key, um, some of those key, uh, revenue figures. I think that, uh, some municipalities' earned income tax is, uh, is going to hit them, uh, uh, the loss is gonna hit them harder than it will Bridgeport, and, uh, you know, in Bridgeport's case, maybe the local services tax, um, or, uh, residential trash fees or residential sewer fees are, uh, are where, uh, where we're experiencing the, uh, the hardship. So to that end, uh, all we can do is sharpen our pencils the best we can and anticipate for the worst and pray for the best. So yes, we will have a very, uh, uh, this will be a very conservative, uh, very, uh, defense-oriented, uh, defense-oriented budget. There will be, where possible, um, straight across the board, uh, reductions in, uh, in projected, projected expenditures, expense accounts. Obviously, there are some things that we cannot control from increasing, healthcare, wages, other insurance costs, other, uh, you know, costs of services that are contractually obligated, trash service, what have you. Uh, however, where we can cut, we will, and hopefully it will be a one-time, uh, one-time squeeze, and we as a country, and, uh, more specifically for us as a region and a borough, uh, can, uh, can soldier through this and, and get back on track. Now, um, I don't wanna, I don't wanna belabor the matter any further, but I have reason to think that, um, while we may have some, uh, shortfalls in some of our traditional, uh, revenue, uh, accounts, uh, we have reason to think that, uh, there will be other ancillary revenues coming into the borough by way of permits, by way of construction costs, by way of impact fees, things of that nature, uh, that will help buttress against, um, any, uh, any shortfalls we experience in our traditional, uh, revenue accounts.
Yeah, at, as chair of the finance committee, I have to say, one, kudos to Keith and Angela and your team, and not just you guys, but to the entire Borough staff for this being a team effort. Um, I, I don't think people will understand, and I don't think I can fully appreciate, that it seems like all of the Borough staff, um, top to bottom, the police, everyone has quickly understood the severity of the situation, responded in kind. There's been no selfishness from anyone to say, you know, "I really, I'm hurting and I need this," or "We need these extra things." And that is commendable. Um, you guys, Keith, uh, took the initiative of freezing costs and also looking for savings very early on in this pandemic. And had you not, we would, might, might not have any surplus, budget surplus there. We may be in a worse situation. So, you know, we haven't paid as much in overtime, we haven't paid in much in other things that we would have, and I think that those savings will continue. There was, there were other issues that happened toward the end of last year, which weren't bad, but just caused extra costs that weren't expected, but I don't foresee happening, um, because of this, um, atmosphere, this culture that seems to have happened, where people are really looking out for the borough as a whole. So that's, that's good. I feel a lot more optimistic about next year than I did, would have six months ago. Um, so I think that while, you know, we have to continue to be conservative with our budgeting, and you're doing the things you need to do, and we've, at Corey and Jim have asked good questions in our, in our committee meetings as well, um, I assume that will happen, but I think that, um, everyone on council should have good confidence in what, um, the administration's doing. And I also do think that we are probably in a better situation than a lot of other municipalities because we're not losing as much in retail-type things or other stuff that we can't fix around. We, you know, we have unique issues with us, but we also have some issues that other places may not have, that are, might be losing more money than they expected. And also, if people are paying attention, this is why it's important to have a real COVID relief package from the federal government. They can take on debt. We can't. The state of Pennsylvania can't, state of New Jersey, state of Virginia, why any of them? That we all have to balance our budgets. And that is why, when we can't, um, get bailed out, when you have responsible budgeting from people like Keith, or in any state, no matter who it is, um, that leads to no money for police, it leads to no money for trash, it leads to other cuts, it leads to going after people for money who can't afford it. And so we need that kind of relief from Washington, which I think a lot of people, um, in state government, I know the budget chair in, in Pennsylvania, Republican, said that he was hoping for that. And so that's what we need is, um, relief for states because states can't take on that kind of deficit spending and debt that the federal government can, and that recoups this loss. So I hope people understand that. Um, but I wanted to say thank you for the very hard work that you've been doing. Um, it's not without notice to the whole team.
Thank you.
Keith, just real quick, I know I've, I've asked you this before, um, with, um, earned in, income tax revenue. Has there, do you have, or any other, do you or any of the other municipal managers in the area have any understanding of what's gonna happen with, um, City of Philadelphia employees who are currently working from home in the suburbs? Uh, and what's gonna happen with that money? Because I don't know how many pe, how many Bridgeport residents this affects, but I work in the City of Philadelphia, and they get my tax money, but I'm working from home and I'm supposed to be filing, you know, you know, a refund of that tax money. Will, will Bridgeport try to see that money? I mean, I hope Bridgeport sees that money. I'm just, has there been any sort of plan with, because I know it's a unique situation. I'm just wondering if that would have any positive effect on anything.
Uh, that's, that's a great question, Megan, and, uh, unfortunately, I can't provide any certainty or clarity, clarity on it. I will say that it, in our, uh, our, our monthly meeting, our, our consortium of Montgomery County managers, it's certainly a topic that has come up. I think there is a sentiment out there that, uh, it, it's Montgomery or Bucks or, or Delco municipalities aren't gonna have, aren't gonna be able to do this on their own. It's a battle that they're going to need the help of state legislators to recoup those monies. And whether or not we get that, uh, that support from those who we need it from, uh, yet remains to be seen.
Thanks. I just, I just wanted to put it out there, and if you need someone to call the state or whoever, I will let them know that my money should be going to Bridgeport.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments, criticisms? No? Uh, well, with that, I will, uh, we'll move forward with the agenda, uh, going on to unfinished business. Are there any members of council with unfinished business, uh, for tonight's meeting? Very good. Uh, next, committee reports. Are there any committee reports or, uh, messages from committee chairs that they would like to relay?
I just wanted to make an announcement for the Sustainability Committee that we are having a recycle- that we are having a recyclable art competition. If you have recyclables around your house, you are crafty, and Halloween is coming up on Saturday, please put together some sort of art project and share it on the Sustainability Facebook page. We, as I said, it is a competition, we do have prizes from local businesses, so please show off your crafty and sustainable side.
All right, thank you, Ms. Nolan. Any others? Very good. Moving forward to the mayor's report, Mayor Barbie.
I have nothing to report this evening.
Very good, thank you, Mayor Barbie. Moving forward to the chief's report, Chief Beretta.
Good evening, everyone. I want to start off with a positive thing. So we had a couple actions by officers recently for recognition, one of which was Officer Andrew Fridley, who on the 19th of October, approximately 8:00 in the morning, responded to River Road in the Swedesburg section of Upper Marine Township in response to the Montgomery County Police Radio for the tracking of an armed bank robbery suspect. There was a bank robbery in a perky area where there was a brief vehicle pursuit. They lost the subject and a transponder was able to track the bank robber down to a place of employment near Swedesburg, wherein my officer, Officer Fridley, and another Pennsylvania State Trooper were looking for the first arriving trooper. They happened upon a scene where the trooper was in a struggle with an armed gunman. Officer Fridley and the other trooper engaged with that subject using pain compliance, and Officer Fridley removed the weapon from the subject, potentially stopping a lethal circumstance. There was later remarked that had it not been for the introduction of Bridgeport Officer Fridley and the other Pennsylvania State Trooper, that the other trooper may have had to use lethal force to protect himself. So congratulations, Officer Fridley. He's a part-time police officer, he's one of those guys that goes at it for us part-time. He's a full Conchester City Fire Officer, does a great job for us. So thank you, Officer Fridley. Also, we want to thank another gun-related crime arrest. This one by Detective William Murphy, Bill Murphy. This occurred on October 7th of 2020, at about 2:26 a.m. North Town Police dispatched to the transportation center just across the bridge. With regards to the victim, it was robbed at gunpoint, the subject was wearing tan pants and a white hat. It runs south through the property toward Bridgeport. Our officers, including Detective Murphy, took a position on the DeKalb Street Bridge. And additionally, no location of the subject was made. They made it check under the bridge. In doing so, he discovered a black backpack by dumpster. While holding the perimeter of the bridge, he observed the described subject approaching the backpack. He announced his presence, drew his duties, fired him on the subject. The subject had a large amount of US currency in a sweatshirt. He was taken, he was held there for North Town Police, wherein the subject, victim of the robbery, positively identified the subject that he was the one that robbed her. So congratulations, another excellence in police services for another Bridgeport officer stopping a gun-related crime. So in tough times, we see our police officer stepping up to the back for the citizens of Bridgeport. We're moving into a concern over the coming Halloween holidays. So just to make everyone aware, there's one to three inches coming in Thursday night to Friday, followed by high winds into Saturday with cooling temperatures. So for those people that are going to be Halloween-ing, please dress your children appropriately and hopefully, to people out for mischief night. Just in case I have, I would ask that for Halloween, that parents consider additional lighting, especially due to the weather and circumstances. So hand-carry a flashlight. Use retro reflective or reflective clothing on your children's costumes. Please, Bridgeport isn't closing down Halloween, but please use masks, because people are going to be walking near each other back and forth. I would ask you to consider this, stay with your children. Ask them, because there's cars that are parked alongside Bridgeport Street. Parking is a premium, please ask the children to cross the streets at the corners where there's better visibility for cars. We don't want to have anything terrible happen to our children. Moving into the emergency management side of the house, just, we had 1,470 cases yesterday. That's mirroring April's effects for COVID. We are now at a state death toll of 8,673 souls. With regards to the number of cases that we're finding, the majority of the positive COVID cases are in the 25-year-old to 49-year-old age range, followed by the 50 to 64, 21, and the 65 to 65 and up at 21. Montgomery County has had 13,695 cases with 99 probables, and we've had 173,180 negative tests. Like to thank our own Dave Nash, helping out with the drug takeback, where we secured about 40 pounds that were turned back over. So thank you for Mr. Nash and helping. We'll be welcoming back our crossing guards, our crossing guards with furlough. They'll be back on the job, preparing for school, Bridgeport Elementary School on the 4th of November. So welcome all for their dedication to the borough. That's what I have for you tonight, thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Chief Beretta. Moving forward to new business, are there any members of new business? Or I'm sorry, are there any items of new business for tonight's meeting? Pardon me. Very good. Seeing none, we can move forward to public comment. I just checked our webmail as we have done with our legal notices ever since the beginning of these remote meetings resulting from COVID. We solicit for email questions that will be read into the record. We had zero questions submitted for tonight's meeting. So with that in mind, council could certainly entertain a motion to adjourn.
Before we do that, Keith, I just, with Halloween coming up, I don't know what the chief said about the weather, from what I could hear from the chief with his remix there. If we could, if you could just post on social media again, the guidelines for trick-or-treating, so people know how they can feel safe and comfortable. It's going to happen, and we want people to feel comfortable in our borough and doing that. And I hope everyone has a great Halloween.
Yes, we're going to do that, and we're going to put out the warning on the tropical storm coming. Or the remnants of the hurricane, rather, but yes.
Then, motion to adjourn?
Second.
All right, folks, we are officially adjourned, it's 8:29. Everybody out there watching, thank you for your attention, thank you for taking part in the meeting. Stay safe, follow the guidelines from all of the health agencies, please. We will see you soon, have a good night.
And have a good night, bye, everyone.
Take care, everyone.